Good evening. It's six o'clock and we'll call to order the local liquor control commission meeting. First thing on the agenda is roll call.
Commissioner Kilman?
Here.
Commissioner Los? Commissioner Maxwell?
Here.
Commissioner Ry Sanders?
Present.
Commissioner Dougherty? Commissioner Hill?
Present.
Chairperson Harvey?
Yes, Mr. Los will be joining us shortly. And we would like to acknowledge Mr. Williams, our city manager, Ms. Sorrell, our city clerk, and other city staff that's with us. Next thing on the agenda, citizens' comments for the liquor commission. Are there any citizens who wish to comment? Okay, next on the agenda, general business of the local liquor control commission. And I would ask if you would silence your phones. Item 3.1, local liquor commission meeting minutes, need a motion for approval. Mr. Dougherty?
I move the approval of the minutes of the local liquor control commission meeting of September 26, 2023.
Thank you. Is there a second? Ms. Kilman?
I second the motion.
Any discussion? Thank you. And roll call, please.
Commissioner Kilman?
Yes.
Commissioner Maxwell?
Yes.
Commissioner Ry Sanders?
Yes.
Commissioner Dougherty?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Chairperson Harvey?
Yes, and that motion passes. Next on the agenda, item 3.2, application for an on-premise, on-premises secondary use restaurant liquor license. Ms. Sorrell?
Attached is an application from El Paisano Grill LLC, doing business as El Paisano Grill, located at 1925 West Main Street. They are seeking an on-premises secondary use restaurant liquor license with a live entertainment rider. This entity previously held a restaurant liquor license in 2021 when Los Hama Incorporated transferred its license to El Paisano Grill LLC. For liquor code provisions, on-premises secondary use restaurants, sales of alcohol and/or video gaming revenues are ancillary to the operation of the business. The principal source of revenue shall come from the sale of non-alcoholic beverages and food. There is not a minimum age for entry. Procedure for criteria, procedure or criteria for issuing a license, upon the filing of an application for a liquor license, the application shall be reviewed by city staff for completeness, accuracy, and recommendation to the commission. The application will then be considered at the next available liquor commission meeting. The applicant shall be notified at the date of said meeting, not less than three business days in advance. Failure of the applicant to accept, read, or review the notice, whether provided by mail, email, teleph- or telephone, does not constitute improper notification by the commission. The commission shall receive and may require such evidence deemed necessary to make findings based upon the standards and factual criteria set out below and elsewhere in the title. After the hearing, the commission may grant a liquor license contingent upon receipt of outstanding items if it is determined that the grant of the license would not be detrimental to the general welfare of the city. The commission may deny an application or may require changes to the applicant's plans in order to establish grounds for the issuance of the license if they find that the applicant meets one or more of the factual criteria listed below. For outstanding items, the $100 application fee has been paid and the criminal history check did not reveal anything which would preclude the applicant from holding a liquor license. Or the staff recommendation, it is to approve. The license classification is appropriate for the operation. The location and parking are fitting for a restaurant. The entity previously held a liquor license and there were no reported issues aside from late food and beverage tax submissions. The recommended action is to approve the issuance of an on-premises secondary use restaurant liquor license with live entertainment rider for El Paisano Grill LLC contingent upon receipt of all outstanding items, or approve the issuance of an on-premises secondary use restaurant liquor license without the live entertainment rider contingent upon receipt of outstanding items, or deny the issuance of the liquor license based on one or more provisions of the liquor code.
Thank you, Ms. Sorrell. Is there a motion? Ms. Kilman?
I'd motion to approve the issuance of an on-premises secondary use restaurant liquor license with live enter- entertainment rider for El Paisano Grill LLC contingent upon receipt of all outstanding items.
Thank you. Is there a second? Mr. Hill?
I second.
Any discussion from council? Any discussion from citizens? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Kilman?
Yes.
Commissioner Maxwell?
Yes.
Commissioner Ry Sanders?
Yes.
Commissioner Dougherty?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Chairperson Harvey?
Yes, and that motion passes. Item four is adjournment of the local liquor control commission. We will adjourn and we will momentarily start our city council meeting. It is 6:06 and we'll call to order the city council of Carbondale, Illinois. First item on the agenda is roll call.
Councilmember Kilman?
Here.
Councilmember Los? Councilmember Maxwell?
Yes.
Councilmember Ry Sanders?
Present.
Councilmember Dougherty?
Present.
Councilmember Hill?
Present.
Mayor Harvey?
Present. And the next item is citizens' comments and questions. Citizens may address the city council for up to four minutes on any agenda item and for the items not listed on the agenda during the citizens' comment portion of the meeting. Public comments will be accepted for a maximum of 30 minutes per agenda item. Those wishing to address the city council should raise their hand to be recognized by the mayor prior to approaching the podium. Speakers should provide their names for the minutes and their comments when the four-minute time limit is announced. The council may suspend or waive the speaker's time limit with the consent of the majority of the council members present and are not required to respond to public comments during the meeting. Are there any citizens who wish to comment?
My name is Marcella Woodson and I am the inter-agency event and media coordinator for Carbondale United. I'm here today to just share some of the upcoming events that Carbondale United has planned. The first one will be this Friday, October 27th, where we'll be hosting a Do You Know What a Violence Interrupter forum is. This is going to start at 5:00 PM, where you will meet the interrupters, also find out about the services Carbondale United offers, how as citizens you can help, and when you can call. Also, just answer any questions. There will be light refreshments served as well, and that'll be here at the Civic Center. And also, the next event we will have will be coming up on November the 2nd, which is celebrating 50 years of hip-hop, where Carbondale United took at-risk students and citizens of Carbondale on a field trip to St. Louis Art Museum, and they're coming back where they did an art project, and they expressed their experience of the 50th anniversary project that they got to do at the art museum. So that's open to the public. We want to exhibit all of the art that the students came back and created to the community, and there will also be live music and food, and that will also be here at the Civic Center from 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM on November 2nd. Thank you.
Are there other citizens who wish to comment?
My name is James Cooper Jr., for the record. With GM Crowe, Carbondale Police Officer Randy Mathis filed false report against me, complaint number 2018-01163 CPD dated February 22, 2018, saying I'm breaking the Illinois law. Assistant federal prosecutor Amanda Robinson had me falsely imprisoned for a year, March 26, 2018 to March 25, 2019, about the same law and other authorities in on the question of my personal liberties at stake at all times. They say I'm breaking the law for years. I say I'm not. Mathis, Carbondale Police Chief Stan Reno, Jackson County State's Attorney Joseph Van Test, and others could have me locked back up. I'm not special to them and I'm not white privilege. I'm a peaceful person. I'm the victim 100 times over. Some white authorities, the powers that be, the chief, the chief Reno, Illinois, US Senator Richard Durbin, the FBI, and others are in on me for years trying slash trying to kill me or get their assassins to do it and have another political assassination of a third, third member of my family in the last year, at any hospital, dental office, and elsewhere we go, because they want their widespread corruption against me and the massive child sexual abuse against many black boys well under 18, remain covered up. Jackson County Judge Michael Fiallo denied my August 21, 2023 motion to reconsider my petition vacate of judgment in case number 92 CF-85 for my 1992 wrongful conviction. Detective Amanda Robinson avoided court hearing. I could attend, including for a court-appointed attorney out of question. The Fifth District appellate court in Mount Vernon denied my October 10, 2023 motion to stay further proceedings until attorney is obtained to file my appeal, 5-23-0680, and my October 10, 2023 motion for a court-appointed attorney to file my appeal, which denies me justice again, gives authorities more time to make more false reports and continue to try to get people to frame me. I'm still seeking attorney to retain, obtain, and attorney to file my, any of my appeal, though possibly a total attorney is not to file my appeal. It was outside the record unknown to Jackson County Judge Dave Watt Jr. at my sentence slash judgment hearing, August 31, 1992, when Jackson County Assistant Prosecutor Amanda Robinson erases prosecutor's attorney's service, Maryland Illinois, my corrupt defense attorney, John McDermott broke the law and covered up the massive child sexual abuse against many black boys and did not present a written report or oral testimony from Counselor Sade Mitchell of Luther Social Service regarding my June 25, 1992 council session report slash recall to sexual abuse against me well under 18 in the 1982 Upper Bound Program, fairly funded overnight summer camp in the dormitory, SIC, by the Director Raven Young and Assistant Director Donald Wilson. The boy sexually abused in a camp by these men in position of trust and authority for many years could easily be in the hundreds. It is well established that court, i.e. Jackson County Court, should have vacated slash thrown out its original judgment upon discovery of fundamental error that was not and could not have been known when the judge was rendered. My fifth amendment right is invoked at all times for my life with authorities don't go out of my way to be around anyone else, including that snakes, people of all races, they have colluding against me, which includes some blacks. I'm a disabled African-American veteran, I'm medically discharged with asthma, which is incurable in other diagnosed health conditions and symptoms that are in my VA medical records and military records. The updated my VA situation is my VA disability for depression, anxiety, sleep apnea, chronic sinusitis, allergic rhinitis, papillons, and VA unemployment bill was filed October 12, 2017. My VA intended file on April 12, 2017. The VA's latest letter, almost four months ago, dated July 6, 2023, says, "We will correct our error and for your claim for further processing. We within inform you our new decision." I still haven't received the VA's new decision. I mailed a full VA monthly disability conversation just like the deserving white reference, and some of the VA hope I die. Mayor Carolyn Harvey, as the first black mayor of Carbondale and in position of public trust, with all my affidavits, motions, false Carbondale police report I have certified mailed to you for many months regarding the corruption, harassment against me, a black citizen, what if any action slash investigations have you called for against white officer Randy Mathis, Chief Reno, and others? Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other citizens who wish to comment?
Hi, my name is Georgia Delagarza, and I am with Our Revolution. I'm also an editor for Women for Justice, and I'm on the editorial board of The People's Tribune, but my favorite thing this last year has been working with a movement, a national movement called One Fair Wage. We are trying to eliminate the language that we do have here unfortunately in Carbondale, subminimum wage. We want to eliminate that. After emancipation, two industries, the Pullman Train Company and the restaurant industry, sought to hire newly freed black people without paying them, forcing them to live on tips. While Philip Randolph formed the black, the first black union in the United States and fought to ensure Pullman car porters received a full minimum wage with tips on top, rather than relying entirely on tips, the mostly black women hired in the restaurant industry were not so fortunate, and still are today are not that fortunate. These workers have struggled with twice the poverty rate of other workers and the highest rates of sexual harassment of any industry, because they must tolerate inappropriate behaviors to feed their families in tips. With the pandemic, the subminimum wage for tipped workers changed from an economic race and gender injustice to one of life and death. Six million restaurant workers lost their jobs. One in four people in Illinois who lost their jobs was in the restaurant energy industry, but two-thirds of the restaurant workers reported they couldn't access unemployment benefits because they were told their subminimum wage was too low to qualify for benefits. So today I say, why are we using the word subminimum when we're talking about our people and labor, especially in Carbondale, as we're trying to grow Carbondale and we want to entice people to come to Carbondale with a good, strong wage? So I'm asked to be on the agenda on the 14th, National One Fair Wage. Would love to come into Carbondale to present to you what they had just signed with Mayor Brandon Johnson in Chicago. We worked very hard. The bill is going into the House at the beginning of January, and we just got our blessing from Mayor Pritzker last week. So we would love to have Chicago, you know, who has just passed it, who starts One Fair Wage in January, team up with Carbondale and make it historical. Since this emancipation, subminimum wage started in Chicago in the beginning, we would love to change that in Illinois, since we are behind, eight states have already passed this resolution. And we have so much data, not just from one foundation, but from multiple foundations, to show you that when we pay a fair wage, everyone benefits. And I'd love to see that for Carbondale, as I know that we're going to be growing here. And you know, as we know, hospitality is one of our biggest industries here. So thank you very much, and I look forward to working with all of you.
Are there others who wish to comment?
Elias Reed. Carbondale resident, 30-year local 773 journeyman construction labor, NUP CPM also. During the 8/22/23 city council meeting, item 2.1 DB presentation, City of Carbondale Diversity Officer Sharonda Carthon stated that the City of Carbondale DB and Minority Workforce Participation Plan was established in 2020. The City Diversity Officer is responsible reviewing the certified payroll reports and visiting the construction project site for compliance, and will monitor minorities employed on the Sims Construction Project with the certified payroll records received. On 9/8/2003, City of Carbondale Diversity Officer Sharonda Carthon sent me an email stating that she has access to the details of the Sims Construction Project workforce through certified payroll documentation that is submitted by the general contractor on a monthly basis. On 9/26/2003, I filed a Freedom of Information request, requesting provided with the copy of the certified payrolls that have been submitted to City of Carbondale Diversity Officer Sharonda Carthon during period 5/1/2003 to present by the Sims Construction Project General Contractor, Fager McGee Construction Company, listing a number of minority and women construction workers that have employed on that Sims Construction Project. On 9/28/2003, City of Carbondale Freedom of Information Officer Jennifer Sorrell sent email me copies of the certified payroll records submitted to City Diversity Officer Sharonda Carthon by the Fager McGee Construction Company on 7/6/2003, 8/3/31/2003, that lists several white male union construction workers and one white female union construction worker employed on the Sims Construction Project during period 5/1/2003 to 9/26/2003, by the Fager McGee AW Plumbing, Mantis Escavating, Marion Concrete, and Burke Electric Construction Companies. It does not list any black male or black female union construction workers that have employed on the Sims Construction Project during period 5/1/2003 to 9/26/2003.
Thank you. Are there other citizens who wish to comment?
My name is Antonio Ragland. I am a public, I work for a public-
Speak into the mic.
Sorry. My name is Antonio Ragland. I work for a public entity just like all of you guys, so I want to start by saying thank you for your service, as well as all the other public officials that's in here. I actually am here tonight to actually suggest a proposal. Like, once again, I think over 40 years, we have been known as Tree City USA, and obviously, you know, we have our district and everything. Me, myself, I have several trees in my yard, as well as everybody else, and I know that we have like the tree pickup and stuff that we put on the side of the road. We have the leaf pickup and stuff like that. But I was wondering if there would be consideration, like some of the other cities, you know, where you have this big area, you know, that's open, let's say, for like eight hours a day or whatever, and you can dump your big limbs or whatever, because just like I said, this is Tree City USA. And I know that some people aren't able, and I know that the city probably gets revenue from that, but once again, everybody's not able. You'll still go through your normal things, putting your stuff on the side of the curb and stuff like that. So whenever there's a big branch, that's hard to deal with, and it's hard to cut up. So once again, I would just like for you to consider just maybe like a big landscape waste disposal place for, you know, the homeowners in Carbondale, you know, that has trees in their yards that have big branches, so then you don't have to figure out what to do with it, and more so, take it over to Carterville and pay a pretty lump sum to where, once again, other cities do it. I don't know how they do it, but it's just a suggestion that I'd like to bring to the board.
Mr. Williams?
Yeah, we're actually, we've been looking at this for, I don't know, two or three years, for a community composting center, where you could do exactly what you just said.
Okay, great.
But we still have some work to do on it.
Yes, sir.
But yeah, we are hoping to go down that path.
Okay, great. I do have one more thing, and I don't know if this lady is here, but I do, I have worked on roads and things like that, and there is this brave soul who lives in Carbondale, Beth Arthur, who wrote this article about the easy fix to streets. And you know, once again, me building roads and stuff like that, it's hard work, you know, and I like doing what I do. I like looking back, looking at it. And unfortunately, over the years, I've noticed that Carbondale has put a lot of money and lots of manpower, sweat into building these roads, and she's 100% right. I mean, like, if you go to places, let's say neighborhoods that do lots of recycling, there's skid marks everywhere, you know, and honestly, she's right. The guy just locks up the brakes, you know, and that's dangerous all around, but I think that that's something that can be curbed, because once again, everybody's vision's different. You know, to me, I build roads, so those skid marks on that road looks like graffiti to me, you know, and it's starting to become a problem, so much of a problem, that, you know, now people are really speaking up. I've been wanting to comment on this for like probably the last three years, but I also was a football coach, which I'm not coaching anymore now, so I'm actually able to find time to come here. But once again, if Beth Arthur's around, I support you on this, and once again, I appreciate all you guys for your service.
Could you tell us where the article is that you're referring to?
The Carbondale Times.
Of which week?
Uh, this current week.
So the one from last Wednesday?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
It looks like October 18th, 2023.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there other citizens who wish to comment? Okay, we'll move on to council comments, general announcements, and proclamations. Are there any council members who wish to comment? Mr. Hill?
Yeah, I just want to give a big shout out to our city staff. The app, what is it called? See Click Fix or whatnot. My mother was riding her motorized wheelchair to Walgreens, it's like seven, 10 minutes from our house, and there was two big holes in the sidewalk, you know, going across to Glenview. And I was very upset, because she was upset, but you know what? When your mama's upset, you get upset right along with her. But I went on the app, did it, just a few hours later, said it was assigned, and just a day or two later, said it was fixed. So I really thank the city staff for doing their job on that. And when you go on there, you can see the map about all the other problems that people have put on there, and you can see that the city answers them pretty quickly. So thank you to our city staff who does that.
Thank you. Ms. Kilman?
Yes, as many of you know, my husband is the Jackson County Animal Control Officer, and so I wind up getting a lot of animal control-related news that the public isn't necessarily privy to. I did want to inform the public that the Humane Society is no longer functional. That's the shelter that has contracted with the City of Carbondale, with Jackson County, and with the City of Murfreesboro to hold all of their impoundments as far as animal control enforcement measures are concerned. And so at this present juncture, they're, the person who was running and managing the Humane Society was let go. Most of their staff was fired. All but one of their staff members walked out, and then the president of that board has resigned. And so I think it's imperative, not just for the City of Carbondale, to seek some alternative measure, but, and I've had conversations with staff along this line, and so we're pursuing all sorts of avenues, potentially. But I need the public to understand that if you call your animal control officer for something right now, I'm not entirely sure what their options are at present. So give them a lot of grace.
Ms. Ry Sanders? No? Okay. Any comments from this side? Mr. Los? And we do want to acknowledge that Mr. Los has joined council. Thank you.
So it's my understanding that it was announced that I would be late, but not why I would be late?
Correct.
And so I was late because my son's got a football game? So that was more important? It was tied when I left, but you know, I was already 15 minutes late, so here we are.
Ms. Maxwell? No? Okay, we'll move on. Next thing on the agenda, we have no public hearings. Number seven is the consent agenda. Mr. Williams?
Item 7.1, our regular city council meeting minutes from October 10. Item 7.2 is approval of a Wells Fargo warrant for the period ending 8/31/23 in the amount of $123,755.64. Item 7.3 is approval of a warrant for the period ending 10/13/23 in the amount of $1,383,618.63. Item 7.4 is acceptance of approved meeting minutes for boards, commissions, and committees. Those meetings are the Board of Fire and Police Commissioners from August 11, Human Relations Commission from April 3, May 1, and July 10, Zoning Board of Appeals, November 16 and March 1, and the Cardinal Public Library, July 12, August 9, and September 20. Item 7.5 is a resolution dedicating $223,178.50 in motor fuel tax funds to pay for the rehabilitation of College Street between Wall Street and Piles Fork Creek. Item 7.6 is award of purchase of an accessible canoe and kayak launch from JLS Marine Inc. of Springfield in the amount of $36,359 through the Boat Access Area and Development Grant at Cedar Lake Boat Launch. And item 7.7 is a resolution accepting a $21,000 grant from the Illinois Certified Local Government Program to perform a survey of historic and architecturally significant properties within the northeast quadrant of Carbondale, and a proven ordinance increasing the FY24 Billion Everett Services Budget in the amount of $30,000.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Are there any questions from council members for items 7.1 through 7.7? Questions, Ms. Ry Sanders?
For 7.7, I have a question. It's $21,000 grant, and as I was reading about the survey, it said that the city had matching funds of 20%. Is that correct? That was $9,000. Now, 20% of $30,000 is not $9,000, should be 30%. How is that calculated? I'd need to know.
It's, you're correct. It's supposed to be 20, I'm sorry, 30% and 6,000. So we can make that adjustment. The 30,000 is the right number, though, right, Mr. Lanzini? Yeah?
So it should be 30%?
It should be 30%, but the total is 30,000.
Okay. The other question that I have is that, looking at the ordinance I believe that you put together, you indicated that there would be the $21,000, $30,000, but in addition to that, we had passed an ordinance at our last city council meeting, adding on this $150,000 or 50, whatever that was. We approved that in an ordinance, I believe, on last, our last city council meeting. So why is that attached to the- So why is that attached to this 7.7? Resolution? Because in it, it gives the different sections, and it adds on the 150-some thousand dollars for demolition. So if we are passing for the $30,000, the $21,000, why are the other items added to this ordinance? That's my question.
I'm not sure I understand.
You understand? Okay. Well, if you look at, you pull it up, you may understand what I'm saying, because it is there.
Which item are you looking at?
I'm looking at seven...
No, which attachment?
Yeah, 7.7.
Mm-hmm. Which attachment?
Okay, and, hold on for a minute. My computer is the worst one out here, but hold on.
Mr. Davis?
The 150,000's in section one, and it's a typo.
Is the mic on?
The...
Yeah?
So the 150,000 that's included in section one is a typo from the person who picked up the ordinance. It should only be 30,000.
Okay, well, it was added to that, so I was just wondering why, since it was already passed. So, so it's a typo.
Okay. Other questions from council on this side? Any questions from council on my right? Citizens have any questions on any consent agenda item? Mr. Reed?
Ellis Reed. Item 7.5 says a resolution dedicating $223,000 in motor fuel tax funds to pay for the rehabilitation of College Street between Wall and Piles Fork, and Sepulveda says another resolution accepting $21,000 grant, and an ordinance increasing the FY24 Building and Neighborhood Services Budget in the amount of $30,000. My question is, can the action items be conducted without these resolutions or ordinance being approved by the city council?
No, because when there's an approved budget that doesn't include the $21,000 or the $30,000 total cost, we need to do a budget adjustment to increase the budget to accept those funds. So it's just really an administrative issue.
That includes the ordinance, too?
Well, the ordinance is what's authorizing the budget adjustment.
Okay. The reason I ask, when they passed that 2020, city affirmative action plan, there was no resolution or ordinance approved by the city council. It was not listed on the agenda. There's no resolution or ordinance adopted by the city council when they passed the 2020 diversity plan, whatever it was.
I didn't understand your last comment, but...
Yes, you're saying so like for a plan, Mr. Reed?
Affirmative action plan, the 2020 affirmative action plan, it was no ordinance or resolution adopted during that city council meeting when they passed, when they approved that 2020 affirmative action plan and DBE plan.
Yeah, I don't, I, yeah, I'll trust you that that's the case. What I would say is a resolution would generally be passed to accept or approve a plan, but an ordinance would be passed if you're actually changing the code, the Cardinal Rice Code.
It was resolution and an ordinance adopted when they approved the 1981 affirmative action plan and 2008 affirmative action plans.
Thank you. Any other citizen comments or questions? Okay, so if I could get a motion for item 7.1 through 7.6, we'll consider 7.7 separately since there are some changes there. Mr. Hill?
I move to approve agenda items 7.1 through 7.6.
Thank you. Is there a second? Ms. Kielman?
I second the motion.
Okay, roll call, please. Oh, I'm sorry, did you have something, Ms. Maxwell? Oh, I didn't look that way. I'll look that way on the next one. Okay, Ms. Sorrell, roll call, please.
Let me catch up just a moment, please. Councilmember Kielman?
Yes.
Councilmember Loes?
Yes.
Councilmember Maxwell?
Yes.
Councilmember Rice Sanders?
Yes.
Councilmember Dougherty?
Yes.
Councilmember Hill?
Yes.
Mayor Harvey?
Yes, and that motion passes. Now, if we can get a motion on 7.7, please. Okay. Mr. Dougherty? Mr. Dougherty?
A question first.
Yes.
Were you alluded to a correction?
Yes.
Okay, should I make reference to that correction?
That's, yes, the noted corrections.
And that noted correction is what?
In section one, the 150,000 should be 30,000? We're not really worried about the 30%, are we, Jeff? Because it's really the 30,000 total. Yep, that's it.
Is that in the ordinance or the resolution? Section one?
That's in the ordinance.
The ordinance.
Okay.
I move the council approve a resolution accepting a $21,000 grant from the Illinois Certified Local Government Program to perform a survey of historic and architectural significant properties within the northeast quadrant of Carbondale, Illinois, and a proven ordinance increasing the FY2024 Building and Neighborhood Services Budget in the amount of $30,000 as amended with the noted corrections.
Thank you. Is there a second? Ms. Maxwell?
I second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Kielman?
Yes.
Councilmember Loes?
Yes.
Councilmember Maxwell?
Yes.
Councilmember Rice Sanders?
Yes.
Councilmember Dougherty?
Yes.
Councilmember Hill?
Yes.
Mayor Harvey?
Yes, and that motion passes. Next on our agenda, general business of the city council, item 8.1, please.
Item 8.1 is an ordinance amending Title I of the Cardinal Rice Code as it relates to city council meetings. During a city council retreat held on September 15th, there was discussion about how to conduct more efficient and effective meetings. Council members shared their individual opinions and concerns, and staff received additional feedback while drafting the proposed ordinance. The attached ordinance reflects the comments and input that were offered. The Open Meetings Act states that "any person shall be permitted an opportunity to address public officials under the rules established and recorded by the public body." Staff researched options for council meeting rules that would balance the right for the public to address their elected officials while also adhering to the primary purpose of council meetings, which is to conduct the business of the city and the set policy. The attached ordinance incorporates the following changes. In 12B1, it's, there's some added language clarifying the intent of meetings, rules of conduct, and public participation are added. In 12B1J, citizen participation, it, language was added to clarify appropriate comments to the city council, defines repetitious comments and comments non-germane to the authority of the city council, clarifies expected conduct for citizen, amend speaker time limit by reducing to three minutes per person from four per item. There's, there will be a former section 12B1E, which is for recording. It removes the requirement, because it's not a requirement of OMA, and all of our meetings, we have minutes produced as well as a video recording. Number four establishes rules of order to simplify parliamentary procedures for meetings. And number five adds an allowance for electronic attendance when there's an issue with childcare obligations. The recommended action is that city council approve an ordinance amending Title I of the Cardinal Rice Code as it relates to city council meetings.
Okay, so I know there's going to be discussion on this. So, yes, Mr. Loes?
I'm just waiting for you to call for a motion.
Before discussion?
You're sitting in the big chair, we'll do it your way.
Okay, so we're, I know there's discussion. So, before we get a motion, I'd really like to discuss so that if, we may not need a motion, I'll put it that way. Okay, is there any discussion on this item? Ms. Kielman?
So I have a number of questions, and this is failing on my part. I had a very busy weekend, that's no excuse. I did not have time to reach out to staff to clarify a lot of these points in advance, which is usually what I would do. And so, forgive me for playing the fool this evening, but I'm going to have to be asking staff a lot of clarifying questions.
Okay, so, in order to do that, I'd like to do it in an organized way. Could we do it page by page? And that way, we don't have to keep going back and forth. So, anyone who has a question on page one?
I have...
Anyone who has a question on page two? And I think that way, the citizens will be able to keep up with us a little bit better also, instead of back and forth? Or is this just general questions?
These are questions on items pretty much one, one, two, three, four, and five, as they're listed in the public content section of the agenda.
Okay.
Pretty much.
Okay. Okay, so I'm looking at page one, which is Article B, 1-2B through 1, meetings. Are there any questions on this page concerning meetings?
So my questions are on 1-2B-7, and then 1.2B-7-B, and 1-2B-1-D.
What page is that? If you open it up on your computer, it's by the page. But while she's doing that, I have a question on item E on page one. City council members shall maintain an environment of mutual respect and trust between themselves and all administrative staff members. I have a question as to what does the word administrative refer to? Can that just be all staff members? Is, Mr., do you want to sit or stand? Mr. Snyder?
That is your preference. It can be either administrative staff, or we can remove administrative staff and just put staff members.
Just all staff members, because, yeah, that's something that I think we should do for everyone. Okay. Any other questions on page one, meetings? Ms. Kielman, are you? If you open it on your computer, I'm on page one. It's the attachment on page one, that was under item E. Under meetings, E.
Between themselves, okay, city council, okay.
Mm-hmm. We're going to remove the word administrative and just leave it as staff members.
Okay. Can we go to F?
F, sure, you have a question there?
I don't have a question, I have a comment.
Oh, okay.
We have these...
Let's read F, so everyone knows where we are. F states, "Council members shall refrain from disorderly conduct, personal charges, and/or using demeaning language to attack the integrity, character, or motives of other members of the city council, the city manager, city employees, contractors, or vendors, advisory boards, or the general public."
Okay, my question is, I've been on city council since 2021, and I had not ever seen anything like this, and so why do we need this extra layer of management? When the council was predominantly white, I'd never heard anything about any of this discussion. We have civility code, we just accepted that. When we are employed, we go through this ethnics training with the city, with the state of Illinois. So now, why do we need another layer of control here? And why did it come to pass now? Why is it relevant today?
Speaking to your right, please.
Because I've been on here since 2021, and nothing like this ever came up. And now, since the council is predominantly brown or black, now we're seeing these layers of management. I need to know why it's there.
I, I think, and this is just my personal opinion, is that I don't attach this to brown, black, or anything else. This is a way we should treat other council members and our staff. I've been really disappointed with the way some staff members have been talked to in city council meetings. I thought it was very disrespectful. People were talked over, they were not allowed to answer questions that were asked of them. So to me, having this in here, does it hurt anything? No. Does it give us some specific guidelines? Yes, it does.
Like, again, I say, do I have the floor, mayor?
You do, yes.
Like I said, I've been here since 2021, and there are many council members that have said a lot of things, and nothing was ever said about anything. I don't want to start calling names, but I will. I'm saying that, why is it significant now?
Would anyone else like to address that? I've given you my answer, and that's all I can do, is give you my opinion. Yeah. So, once again, does it hurt to have this in here? Does it, is it too much to ask for council members to be, I mean, to be respectful? No, it's not.
It's not, I'm not saying that...
And maybe what I should say is, maybe those other times when you weren't on council, maybe those mayors and city councils should have acted on this, which would have prevented some of the behavior that has happened at, in this council meeting, or with this council. Maybe if they had acted then, those things would not have happened. Again, some of our staff have been very disrespected in council members, in council meetings.
Saying again, I am saying once again, why is it that when some people speak, then it has to be managed? But when other people speak, it's okay? And so, I'm saying that, yes, there should be respect, but the respect goes both ways. And I'm saying that, why is it a point of concern now?
And I guess...
And I cannot see why it is, because I have had some council members say some really bad things to me. And nobody, no, 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 nobody ever said anything. So, I'm just saying, why is it prevalent now?
Are you saying that council members have said things to you in the meeting? Or are you saying this was outside the purview of the meeting?
No, in the meeting, in the meeting. Go back and look at the recordings, in the meeting. And I'm saying to you that now, all of a sudden, that when certain people say things to staff, it's disrespectful. I don't think that I have ever said anything disrespectful to any, any person, staff person. I ask questions, I challenge them. That is what we're supposed to do. I was elected to challenge and to speak up. Now, if you want me to be silent, if you want me to just say yes to everything that you recommend, that's one thing. But to have this another layer of control, I am totally against it.
Okay, so let me ask the question once again. Specifically, what is in item F? Disorderly conduct, personal charges, demeaning language to attack the integrity, character, and motives of other members of council and city employees? What specifically, which specific item there would you like to see removed?
It's the timing.
We aren't...
Now, it's the timing of what has been presented.
Okay.
It was not presented in 2021, it wasn't presented in 2022... It wasn't presented in 2022. But it was presented when the council turned brown.
And let me just say once again, if before the council turned brown, something had been done, we would not be here today. So we will move on. Are there other items here that anyone has questions on, on this first page? Ms. Kilman?
I was going to ask if we could, if, I was gonna ask mayor if it's all right that I ask staff, um, a question about whether or not they can not go page by page, because I have specific concerns that I didn't necessarily line out in the format that we're using.
Sure.
Right now, and I do believe that they're substantive on the matter of just policy or philosophy, so.
Okay.
Jamie, is that okay with you? Or Jeff, whoever's, whoever's doing the scrolling over there?
Okay, if you would just reference so we can find it, because I have a hard time seeing the screen.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, that would be item six, one dash two B dash seven, under Rules of Order. So I believe that the, the exact quotation is, "No citizen shall admonish the audience in any manner." I personally have an issue with the word citizen, just from a basic philosophical perspective, because a lot of the people that come to these meetings are of course going to be citizens, but I'm sure some of them are not of the United States, and they're residents of Carbondale, and we still serve them whether or not they vote for us. And so I just have a bit of an issue with the, the language, the use of, usage of the word citizen there. But then, um, an, a secondary question is like, is that language intended to apply solely to council members and to staff? Or is it, is it intended for the general public or both?
We're still trying to find the section.
I am also. What, what page are you on? If you look at the top, it'll tell you what page it's on.
It's under B in debates. If you go down, hang on, I just had it. No, yeah, it's under the Rules of Order, it's the very first line of A, it's the end. Where it says the mail, the mayor should call to order any council members. And if you keep going down, it goes to that.
Are you sure? Where's, on six?
Okay, it's page six, what item number is it, Ms. Kilman?
B six.
B six, okay. B, debate and discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
My question was on the admonition, the usage of the word citizen, but then the admonition, "No citizen shall admonish the audience in any manner." What exactly do we mean by that? How is that going to be utilized? That's gonna be a question that comes up for a lot of this, because I'm not entirely certain what, what the, the substance of that language is exactly, the way that it's written.
I'm gonna defer to Jennifer a lot, because this is parliamentary stuff.
Thank you.
And Jennifer, I was reminded, we do need to, we have that one typo there. And that, okay.
The deep and dark and dirty secret of all of this is that most of this came from a bunch of different municipalities that we kind of sandwiched a bunch together. So, um, one of the tricks of the trade for addressing these is find out how other communities have used it, and then try to find something that fits. So I couldn't answer that, but the village of Wheeling might be able to. That's really all it is. We, we tried to, uh, look at some different codes that looked like they had some good structure and order, and reflected what we were more or less trying to look at. Therefore, strike throughs are not inappropriate.
Okay, I, yeah, I'm, I'm, I would strike, if it were just me, and we're, I guess we're spitballing and discussion, discussing here, um, I would strike through, "And no citizen shall admonish the audience in any manner", just upon the basis that like, I don't think that's a real issue that we have to deal with. And so I don't wanna be lumping more in here than it is necessary. I do have more comments, if you all will forgive me for my.
Let's make sure everyone is in agreement with that, so we don't have to come back to it.
Okay.
Is everyone in agreement with her suggestion to just take that out? "No citizen shall admonish the au, audience in any manner." Uh, Mr. Los, you have a question?
Yeah, so I had a hard time following the explanation of what the point of that was, or what, was the idea that no one who's coming to speak would address the audience?
Would turn around and yell at the audience.
So then if we, I think we should keep that. I saw a guy, you know him, um, turn the podium around and shout down, uh, some of the, uh, the women in the audience on a subject that, uh, he really knew nothing about. I'm not gonna say his name. So I think we need it, but I, yeah, we shouldn't use the term citizen.
Cool.
It should be no speaker, and I don't know what admonish, I don't think that belongs there. Uh, no speaker shall address the audience.
Well, see, I don't mind people addressing the audience, but I, i, if people have been attacking other members of the public who are coming here, that's, you know, that's a, a line that I would have them not cross. And so if there's a way that we can reword that, to where like, no resident shall, you know, attack the audience while they're speaking, I think that's appropriate. Thank you for the sort of temperance there, Adam.
Okay, so are we keeping it, or are we taking it out? Are we rewording it, I guess, is the thing, reword?
Sounds like we're rewording maybe?
That was a friendly reword.
Okay, okay, did you get the correct? Okay, thank you, okay. Ms. Kilman?
So there's also a, I didn't write down exactly where it was. I think it was up further, but it was the, the prohibiting of signs, banners, and the display materials. I'm not entirely certain where that is within this. I'm, my apologies.
It's closer to the front.
Yes.
Okay, what's your comment on that?
Um, do we have a substantive problem with people displaying banners, signs, or display materials in council, and in, during council meetings? Is that an issue that we have to deal with? Or something that we should be concerned with? And does that limit, from a legal perspective, I guess this is Jamie, people's freedom of expression?
That would fall under a time, place, and manner. Uh, there have been incidences in other cities where people have come in with banners and basically blocked views of other per, participants in the meeting. So that is generally the concern, is that signage can become disruptive. So it's not saying you can't have signs of this language, but you can't have any signs, so as to not disturb the meeting. Uh, and that's the general usage of it.
I guess my suggestion, and if council's okay with this, my suggestion would be to, to reword that as, "The general public shall not be permitted to bring obstructive signs, or displayed obstructive signs, banners, or other display materials in the council chambers." Some, I, if someone wants to bring something that's like not harmful, or they're re, representing something, a cause of theirs, I don't wanna preclude them from being able to express themselves while they're here. Basically, all of my concerns are about us making ourselves less accessible to the public and be, allowing the public to be heard as they attempt to express themselves to us and look for their problems to be solved. And so if there are ways that we can free up people's ability to express themselves and allow themselves to be heard, I'm sort of looking at this through that lens, while still understanding that we need to modify the way that we're doing our meetings. And so I understand that portions of this are entirely imperative.
Okay, I'm fine with the language the way it is. You know, my thought was, when you make it so that it's, someone has to make a judgment call as to if this is, you know, if I'm running for city council, am I allowed to bring my vote for Carolyn sign? You know, and have it in the back of the room? I shouldn't do that, but that's a judgment call. So I'm fine with the, but let's see what everybody else thinks. Mr. Doherty?
I have no real problem with it, but it raises a question. Uh, as I look out in the audience, I could see somebody wearing a T-shirt, uh, with this message. You would otherwise put on a, a, a sign or a banner.
Yeah, okay. Uh, Ms. Rice Sanders, turn your mic on, use your mic.
I'm sorry, the change, uh, from four minutes to three minutes?
Wait, let's stay on this one, and we'll come back to that. Let's stay here first.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so, any, are we keeping it, or let, Mr. Los?
Are we still on the thing about the signs?
Yes.
Keep it.
Keep it? Keep it, keep it, I'm seeing keep it. Okay, so we'll keep that. Was that it for you?
On that one, yes.
Okay.
I have, I have more, but if other council people want to comment, I don't wanna monopolize.
Okay, Ms. Rice Sanders?
I was, um, wanting to talk about the four minutes, from four to three. We're changing that, is that what the plan is?
Did I, was the suggestion changed?
Just a suggestion, okay, well, I just feel that we should probably keep it as is. Four minutes, it's not a lot to me, rethinking everything. And you have, what, 20 people that come, maybe, to city council? And if a person wants to express themselves or have concerns, I think we should allow them to do it. We're always, you know, we shouldn't be just cutting corners for the sake of cutting corners, but we should, uh, want our constituents to speak in. Whenever somebody speaks, I, I, I learn something new, and that's why we're here, because we don't know everything, but when you come in to speak, I think that's a privilege and an honor that, that we have that, so you can speak, so.
Okay.
I, I, I'm not in agreement with cutting it at this time.
So your recommendation is to keep it as is? Let's see what the rest of council, I agree with keeping it also. Anybody else wanna keep? Ms, Mr. Los?
We're keeping what now?
Keep the four-minute time limit, instead of changing it to three minutes? Keep it at four?
Oh, I'd change it.
Pardon me?
I would change it, and I'll tell you why. Uh, 'cause the, so we're gonna have to have some limit, because we shouldn't be able to have a filibuster in here. That'd be, that makes no sense, so we have to have some limit. And there's a tension between the length of, if you're gonna limit total amount of comment time, then that creates a tension between the length of individual comments versus the number of people who are able to comment. And so I think, uh, you know, if you wanna speak, you can come prepared to do that, fit it in three minutes, and then if we're saying there's a 20-minute limit, and that's three minutes per speaker, then you can get six, and I guess you would have two minutes left over, so, uh, you'd go seven. But if it's a four-minute limit, then you could get five. So more people could speak, they just wouldn't be able to speak for as long.
Yeah, yeah, okay, Mr. Doherty?
I agree with Councilman Los. Um, that was the same rationale that I had. In fact, we had a very contentious issue, uh, and a person got up and said, "Gonna filibuster to fill up their time, so they can't talk." So I think if we do have a maximum time limit, the three minutes is, is adequate time for people to get their point across, and it allows for more speakers.
Okay, so we have two, yes?
Well, it's also worth pointing out that, uh, lower down there, the, we're able to suspend that time limit, you know, either the, the max of 20 minutes, or the max of three minutes, if we need to. So if somebody has something that's especially probative, then we could suspend it if it's gonna take them three or four minutes, you know, five minutes to speak.
So I see two for changing it to three?
Uh, I say we keep it the same.
Keep it to four?
Uh, and I, the reason I say that is because sometimes when people get up there, even with the four minutes, I don't know what they're saying, 'cause they're trying to read it so fast to get it within their four minutes. And I was elected to listen to the constituents and try to be that person, that voice for them. So if I can't hear it, we gonna reduce it to three, and they gonna talk even faster, that will be an issue with me.
Okay, so that's a keep at four?
Yes.
Okay. Four, okay, two.
I would, um, be at keeping it four or three, I would rather suspend or waive the 20-minute time limit overall. It's like, no matter what, if there's an individual time limit, that's fine, but a time limit for public comments, I think, is the real issue, because that's what we're trying to shoehorn people into anyway. And it doesn't seem like there's a wealth of individuals who are coming to meetings on a regular basis. We're only getting so many comments for the public comment period, anyway.
Okay, well, we have four who are saying keep it at four, so we'll keep it at four. Okay. Uh, Ms. Rice Sanders, did you have anything else? Okay, Ms. Kilman?
Um, I believe there's one, I, I don't know if it's 1.2 or one dash two B, 1.2 B dash seven dash B, that's debate and discussion. And that limits debate to corporate authorities and the city manager. So I guess my question is, the way that that's written, would there be an allowance for public comment on agenda items? Or would that relegate all public comment to the public comment section? Is, is the intention of that to relegate public comment to the public comment section? Okay.
What item number was that?
1.2 B dash seven dash B, as I have it written. Thank you.
Page five, section B.
Item number, oh, what item number? I'm on page five.
The point of that really was to try to stop back and forth, which kind of lends to an argument rather than discussion and hearing, which does kind of devolve that way. Because then sometimes you get a bit argumentative. There, you know, the public has their right to every item to make their comments and have their points heard, but that was the point, is to keep the debate among the decision makers essentially.
Thank you for the clarification, I appreciate that. And then Adam has something, and then we can come back.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm struggling to follow this. Where are we? What are we talking about? Can we say it very slowly?
My apologies.
It's been a long day.
Page five.
What specific item are we talking about?
Might be actually six, nope, it shows six, actually, I apologize.
Okay, six, I thought.
Exhibit A, page six, debate and discussion.
And, uh, so we've got, that's B, we've got one, two, three, where are we? They go on and on?
I've had it written as.
Okay, the whole sec, could I just talk about that for a second?
Did you say a second?
Yeah, maybe not, maybe slightly more than a second. So the, so everything in here, prior to one, two, B, seven, Rules of Order, and then everything after that, I think there's only one minor change after that. I'm good with all of that, with one exception. One, two, B, seven, I don't think we should pass that at all tonight. And I'm not saying that I don't think we should pass it, ever, but this, it, I think it needs to go to legal, to be reviewed more thoroughly. And I'll tell you why, it, you know, so there's a.
Tell us what, or read the, what you're talking about.
The rules.
So that the citizens know what we're talking about also.
Yeah, it, well, so it's.
Because most of them don't have this on their phone.
Okay, I wa, I, I can't read the whole thing, but if you go to one, two, B, seven, and you start there, uh, with A, and then you continue to scroll, and all of that stuff that you see there, that is underlined, keep going, we're not done. Just keep on going, all of that, pages of it.
Oh, that's underlined.
The whole thing, all of the Rules of Order.
So you're under debate and discussion, everything under debate and discussion?
Well, no, everything that's under one, two, B, seven. So then it starts with A, which is not a subheading, and then B is debate and discussion, but then it goes on after that. And I'll, and I'll, I'll explain why. So it, it's incon, it's internally inconsistent. And so there's a, you know, if we're trying to decide what does this stuff mean, we, you know, typically what you would do is employ, there are rules of construction that you would employ to determine what does an ordinance or a statute mean. And one of those is that when, when a statute or an ordinance uses different language in different places, it's assumed that different things are meant. And so, uh, I'll give you an example here. We have, uh, under tabling. "A motion to table shall dispose of an item of business," and then it goes on. Okay, and there's no talk about what, it's just a motion, okay? But then if you go down to B, removing from table, no matter maybe removed from the table, except on motion, or except upon motion, adopted by a, an affirmative vote of four members of the corporate authorities. So if I have to struggle and determine what does this mean, A means that if someone makes a motion to table, that's it, it's over. We don't have to even vote on it. And why does it, does that mean that? Because we've used different language in different places. So this thing is entirely internally inconsistent. And it needs to not be. And so we should not pass any of that tonight, we should just excise that out. But then the stuff above that, and the stuff below that, we should do all that, with one exception, which I'll talk about whenever it's my turn to talk about that.
Okay, so you're saying, under C, motions to table, postpone, defer, and remove from agenda?
No.
You want, oh, no.
I'm saying everything beginning at one, two, B, seven, at the bottom of page five, Rules of Order, and then continuing along through all of page six, and all of page seven. and all of page seven, and all of page eight, and all of page nine, and, uh, on page ten through item ten, rescinding and repeal. All of that should be excised.
From this.
And sent over to our attorney to review for internal consistency and, and make sure that we can understand what that stuff means.
Okay. Is everyone in agreement with that?
I, I trust my attorneys, so if the attorneys in the room are saying, "Hey, we need to make sure that the language is exact."
Okay, Mr. Snyder, is that...
We can take that section back for review.
Okay, very good. Okay, any, any, everyone's, okay, if Mr. Snyder said that, we're, we're good. You have something else, Mr. Los?
I've got one other beef with this, and then otherwise I'm fine with it. And that is on page three, and it's item eight.
Item eight?
"The mayor reserves the right to override the adloved rules in the case of emergency or other unforeseen circumstances." We just need to cut that entirely. One, it wasn't something we discussed at the, uh, at the retreat, which was kind of the point of this. Two, i- i- We already deal with that in ten. The council and, and that language probably needs to change too, because the old language was that the mayor, on her own, or the council by motion approved by a majority, can suspend these rules. And we should just leave it there, you know? There's no need to, one, separate those into, into two things, and then just the, again, the language of this, "The mayor reserves the right." Well, the mayor's not really in a position to reserve any rights, you know? The council passes the ordinance. That's, that's how that works. So that should go. Eight should go, and then ten should be revised, basically, to reflect the old language, which is the mayor or any city council member may move, suspend, blah, blah.
Okay. Thank you for pointing out number eight. I had that highlighted on my copy also. Thank you. Okay, is everyone in agreement with that? Yes. Okay. You got that, Ms. Reel? Okay, other, uh, items. Ms. Rice Sanders?
Yes, um, 1, 2B10, removal of appointees.
1, 2B10.
It says, "Council made by a majority vote. Of those council members present, remove any officer or employee appointed by them except as provided in the managerial form of municipal government." Ordinance 200546, ordinance 201932. Someone explain that, please. Who's exempt?
Okay, I, I'm sorry. I have to find it. The city council... Page 10, okay.
I don't know that we need the, the last part of that, the managerial form. I mean, I would defer to Jamie. I mean, basically what it's saying is that the, the only person that the council appoints is the city manager. So this is saying that, uh, by a majority of vote, you can remove any officer or employee. And that's consistent with city manager contracts as well.
Mayor, if I may, that language is actually not changed from our current language. That is currently in our code, the 1, 2B10, removal of appointees. That's the way it's been drafted since 2005, with an amendment in 2019.
Okay, thank you. Did that answer? Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Dougherty, use your mic.
Some historical background. On that particular section, that was, uh, the only person who was appointed, aside from the city manager, was at that time the city clerk. And, uh, that language was put in there, uh, to address the city clerk, who was appointed by the council, uh, was appointed by the mayor with consent of the council at that time.
Okay, Mr. Los?
So that should, should probably say by a majority vote of those, of the council. There are seven council members.
Doesn't it say by majority vote?
It says by majority of those present. So if you called a special meeting, uh, and you had three people who wanted to dispose of a city manager, but not four, and you called a special meeting, which only takes two council members, you could, you could set that at, at a time where five people could attend, and then three could fire the manager.
Like when there's a football game, you mean?
Yes, yes, during my boys' football game, or other times like that.
Okay.
So, yeah, that should probably change. Uh, I mean, I realize that that's the language that's been there, but if we're, if we're tinkering, we should probably fix that.
So you're wanting it to say majority vote of council, not present?
The whole council, yeah.
And take out present also?
Yeah.
Okay.
Excluding vacancies, maybe.
Yeah, excluding vacancies, but that's addressed someplace else in here, isn't it? Okay, Mr. Dougherty.
S- so now I'm a majority vote of the council, or a majority vote of the full council?
Why don't we say seated council members?
That sounds good.
Yeah, if it helps, the contract tip, I mean, the same contract that's been used for a long, long time, it says four. So.
Okay. Okay, any other comments on my right? Uh, anything on, yes, Ms. Maxwell? Turn, use your mic, please. Turn your mic on.
On number F, that, uh...
F under what?
"The council members shall refrain from disorderly conduct, personal charges, and/or using..." That F. I have a problem with it being implied that the council members are the only ones that is, uh, performing this action, because it says just the council members. And, uh, from my recollection, uh, even before I got up here and before the council changed, there have been many instances where, um, other people besides the city council, like the mayor, have said things that, um, was demeaning language, or to attack their integrity or character or motives of others. I don't, I think if we're gonna put this in here, it should say all staff. It should not just be implied that city council is the only people that are performing this disorderly conduct or this personal charge or using demeaning language.
Okay, and I guess my assumption was that the mayor is part of the city council, so the mayor is included in that language? Use your mic, please. Use, use your mic.
Then it says the motives of the city council, city manager, city employees. It just, to me, it reads like it's just, uh, putting the, um, council members on, on notice, and not the whole entire staff.
You mean, because usually staff members, the, you mean the staff members that are here present at the meeting? The department heads, not just our, or I guess clarity, please?
My clarity that is saying, my understanding of this is saying that the council members are the only people that are performing this, uh, these acts of disorderly conduct and personal charges, and so forth and so on.
Because we don't make the guidelines for staff. Staff report to the city manager.
So you're saying that if they, um, have disorderly conduct or personal charge, that's not on us, that's okay, but it's...
That would be for the city manager to discipline that person in the manner determined by the city manager. Am I right, or, I mean, am I... Use your mic.
Yeah, the, the intent was, I mean, again, this has been discussed. This was discussed at the retreat, and the intent was, these are councils' rules for you guys to have council meetings, and we generally don't participate, um, unless we're asked ques, answered, asked questions. But it's really your meetings that you guys are leading the conversation. So I think that is what the intent of it was, why it's written that way.
Is that, or how would you like for it to read? Use your mic.
I single out council members. I'm, I'm, uh, in agreement with gender. Like, why did this just come up when the council got brown? I'm there. Like, it hasn't been before. Like, there hasn't been other instances of this happening. But now we're gonna put this whole rule in place, and then to me, it like singles out the council members as we're the villains.
Okay, once again, I can't, we as a council can do nothing about what has happened in the past. We cannot go back and reprimand any mayor or any council member that they did not act and put something in place to avoid the situations that we have had. When this says council members, that is inclusive of everyone here on this day, on this, up here now. So I guess my question still is, what, what do you want it to say?
Nothing.
You want this eliminated entirely?
Eliminated.
Okay, so we will do that, just like we did everything else. Who, who's in favor of just show of hands? I think we did this already. Do you want it removed, or do you want to keep it? So, remove, show me, show of hands if you want it removed. I see one. I see two. So the rest of, if you want to keep it, show of hands, please. Two. Okay, so the majority here, just like everything else, the majority is saying keep it. Ms. Rice Sanders?
I, I want to say, council, from what my understanding, we're supposed to be legislative. We're supposed to pass ordinances and laws. We're supposed to oversee the implementation of them, whether it be with, uh, staff or whatever, and how it's being conducted. That is our role. Now, either you want us to do what we're supposed to do legislatively, or you just want us to leave the law. I'm gonna ask questions. I'm going to ask, there's been certain situations here, and I didn't want to say it, but I will say it, that things were said here, and I investigated it, and went and talked to the individuals, that they said that they had contacted staff here, and it was not true, and I got the information to Gary. Nothing ever came of that. Now, I'm being disruptive because I challenged the person that said something. That's our job. That's our job. I want to make sure that the information that we're getting is correct. Now, we don't care about it being correct. We don't care about what's going on. Call me disruptive, but it's my job to investigate, to make sure things are done right and properly. And some way, and some things that we do, I'm sorry, are not done properly.
Yeah, and I'm sorry, I thought you were...
That is all that I'm saying, ma'am. I'm not trying to be disrespectful. I'm saying that we are in, we are legislators. We are in the legislative body of passing laws and ordinance, and making sure that they're enforced, and that people implement them according to what is written. If you're not gonna implement according to written, take them off the books.
Okay, so let me ask this question once again. I don't see any implication in here where it says, "Don't ask questions." I don't see where it says, "Don't investigate." Please point out to me the language here that would avoid you or prevent you from doing what you just said you were elected to do.
I'm saying to you that the mere fact, the mere fact that I asked questions, and the mere fact that I have investigated and found out that things that were said here were not true, then the conversation comes up, "Oh, it's disruptive." It is, uh, uh, disrespectful. It's not disrespectful. I think when people tell, uh, things that are not true, I think that's disrespectful.
Okay, so once again, please point out to me, because obviously, I'm, and, and I guess to me, I'm not taking this as a personal, this is written specifically for Carolyn. This is written for this council and for councils that come after us. Okay, Mayor, huh? Show me the words here that indicate, "Don't ask questions, don't investigate, don't pass legislation." I don't see it.
Well, let's go back, let's go back and read it.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll read it, 'cause I have it here in front of me.
Okay.
"Council members shall refrain from disorderly conduct."
Disor, so what's disorderly? And who determines if it's disorderly?
Okay.
Come on.
Oh, I'm not gonna answer that.
Okay, okay.
Personal charges.
Keep reading, okay.
And/or using demeaning language to attack the...
Demining, so who?
Wait, let, let me read it, so everyone knows what we're talking about, okay? I'll start over. "Council members shall refrain from disorderly conduct, personal charges, and/or using demeaning language to attack the integrity, character, or motive of other members of the city council, the city manager, city employees, contractors or vendors, advisory boards, and/or the general public." Nothing there states, "Don't ask questions." Nothing there says, "Don't investigate." Nothing there says, "This is a personal attack to any specific council members."
So why is it there?
If, if it hasn't happened, or it doesn't, you know, why is it there?
Mr. Williams, did you want to comment?
Yeah, I, I hate to even go there, but the reason it's there is because of what's happening right now. Because there's been some comments made that you just mentioned about investigating things that weren't true, and that's not true. The most recent example, and I'll just let the council know, the most recent example is, there was, um, in August, I believe, or July, there was a meeting where we approved the purchase of a mower. We were asked why Scott Coleman didn't bid. He was in Carbondale. We said we didn't know, and the following day, you went to Scott Coleman's office and called me and put Scott on speakerphone, and Scott said a whole bunch of things that were untrue, and I later sent proof that we had contacted Scott Coleman, as was said at the meeting. So you have questioned us a number of times, but we've debunked consistently every single instance where staff has been accused of doing something wrong.
I, um, contacted Mr. Coleman. It was said here in council that Mr. Coleman had been notified and had received a packet, and he didn't return it. Staff had contacted him several times, and he had come out looking at the equipment, wanting to bid on it, and the staff here initiated it. And so for it to be said that he just didn't send it back, that was not true. You're saying that it was true. Now, I'm saying that it is still the responsibility of the council. You say it's a twenty-four-hour job, twenty-four-hour job. Well, if it's a twenty-four-hour job, then we are supposed to do just that. And you said that your staff said one thing, and the local person said that it was something else. I asked you to send me back documentation or information about that. You never did.
That's not true. I sent it that afternoon after we talked.
Okay, you all need to meet tomorrow or whenever and resolve that. We're not going there. This is why we have this in place. Number one, I'm sure the people sitting here don't want to hear this kind of a debate between council members. That, we want to encourage people to come. When it goes back and forth like this, this is not gonna encourage people to come. Mr. Hill, did you have a comment? Okay, are there any other items in this that we need to discuss? Ms. Hillman?
I'm sorry to continue to belabor the point. I know we're going well. Adam also has his hand up, so...
Oh, I didn't...
And has for twenty minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry. You know, when you look to one side, I have to turn. Okay, Ms. Hillman, you'll be next, Mr. Los.
The, the comments that I have are, are relevant to page one and page two. I wrote them down, so that way we could all follow along. Specifically on page one, that would be 1-2B-1, and that would be on E. "City council members shall maintain an environment of mutual respect and trust..." between themselves and all administrative staff members. Now, I do not personally have an issue maintaining an environment of mutual respect and trust between myself and all administrative staff members. I think that we have a good staff, and that's my interpretation as it is at present. But I think that trust is earned, mutual respect is one thing. I'm, I'm always fine to, to treat people with respect, whether they're treating me with respect or not, because that should have no bearing on how I walk through the world. But trust is something that we can't legislate. It's not something that we can put into ordinance and enact. It's something that has to be earned between parties over time, and trust can be broken. And so I don't necessarily think that it's something that we can say that we shall maintain trust, um, but that we can strive to maintain trust. I think that, that it's fine to set in there as a goal, that that's something that we should all continue to, to attempt to achieve. I don't know that it's something that we can simply say that we shall do.
Would you prefer that to be, to should?
Sure, I mean, we can, it's, it's a bit of a judgment, but sure, we can say should.
Okay, is everyone in agreement with that? I see one head nodding, no. Okay, leave it as is. Okay, we're, we're, we're getting down to, okay. Yeah, Mr. Dougherty.
I, I appreciate, uh, the comment and, and the argument, um, made on that particular item. Um, I was shaking my head, because I don't think, uh, should should be in an ordinance.
Okay. Okay, so you, you wanted to say a shall. I see two heads nodding, yes. Ms. Maxwell. Shall or should? Shall, that's three, I'm four, so it stays a shall. Anything else?
Yes, so that would be page two, 1 dash 2B dash 1, would be D, D1, which restricts comments that are relevant to, or, restricts the comments specifically to what's relevant to city business from the public. Um, I guess my question, quite generally, to Jennifer, is the way that this is meant to be applied, would that say preclude some, someone from coming and talking about a national issue that wasn't necessarily reflected or represented in our agenda?
Not specifically reflective of the agenda, but do we, as, well, do you as the body have the ability to take action regarding it? So if you're going to, let's say, come in and complain about something that California's doing, that's clearly not within the council's purview. So that is really what is intended to limit it to, is those matters that are within council's purview as opposed to those that are clearly from without. We can't, let's say, require Marion to do anything. We have a specific area. We can certainly influence, in some cases, maybe send resolutions in support of. There's nothing wrong with that, but it's trying to limit the scope to what we can manage.
I think that's, the way that it is intended to be applied is understandable. I could see it being misused by councils that come after us, and mayors who are not as gentle with the public as we have right now. Um, I could see a much stricter mayor utilizing that in a, a way that would punish people for trying to come here and talk about things that the mayor simply didn't want to hear. You know, and this isn't, this has nothing to do with the current council. I just worry that in the future, it could be misapplied. It's just a worry.
Do you have others? Ms. Rice Sanders.
Yes, can you tell me, uh, now this is in Title I, what other, I know we have Home Rule. Uh, what other municipalities have this in their code? I, I looked at several, and I could not find it, but, uh, apparently, are we setting a precedent here, or what?
I don't think so.
Most, yeah, I mean, there's a lot. Most of the, a, a lot of the language here came from O'Fallon.
O'Fallon, okay.
Yeah, and there's this way more, we could send you all this stuff. We looked at Itasca, Wheeling.
Was another one?
Um, I forget, there's several.
Yes, I, I have a list of many that have portions of this, but most of those primary ones were Wheeling, Itasca, O'Fallon.
Okay, other, other items we need to discuss? So I'm, I'm assuming that I assumed correctly in saying, we don't need a motion for this. We wanna send it back for, oh, wait, I'm so sorry. I didn't ask for audi-, is anyone awake out there? I didn't ask for audience comments, and I think I saw Ms. Monty's hand. Don, excuse me, Don Monte Carbondale. I wrote this out, so I hope I don't miss anything. I have some technical issues. In most places in this part of the city code, the city council is referred- Mr. Monty. I'm sorry. Either raise your head or lower the mic. There we go, okay. In most places in this part of the city code, the city council is referred to as city council. But in proposed language for some sections, 1, 2B, 7, the word board is used. Also, the word corporate authorities are used in various sections. For consistency and to avoid confusion, city council should be used in all of these places. I'm gonna give you something in writing, so you'll see all the references. There's a lack of consistency in numbering in the sections. The number letter sequences is different in 1, 2B, 7B, 1, 2B, 7C, and 1, 2B, 7E. One uses numbers, another uses small letters in parentheses, and the third uses numbers in parentheses. There's no consistency in the format. In section 1, 2B, 7E pertaining to motions to amend and to fill blanks, there's no discussion about filling blanks. In proposed 1, 2B, 7E1 about quorum, the quorum is fixed at four city council members. But existing 1, 2B6 concerning quorum accounts for situations where there are one or more vacancies on the city council. This conflict needs to be resolved. Under proposed 1, 2B1, there's a numbering problem. It goes from A to G, but on the next page, it starts all over with B, which led to confusion when we were trying to figure out where everybody is. That needs to be resolved, and all the following sections are gonna have to be renumbered. In the second 1, 2B1D on citizen comments, does this prohibit individuals from announcing upcoming community advance nor not directly related to the city government? Just like somebody got earlier this evening and announced something that's going on in the community, and presumably inviting the council members to. Are they gonna be allowed to do that, or prohibited? That's a question. Now the substantive issues. In one, in proposed 1, 2B, 7C content, only city council members can ask to remove an item from the consent agenda. The public cannot. This denies the public a chance to have a consent item discussed, including with public comment. Proposed 1, 2B, 7D9 limits individuals to, to three minutes, and total public comments to 20 minutes. Used substantial reductions from the current limits of four and 30. This is too little time. It's difficult at four minutes to say everything that is needed, especially with complex agenda items like this one. It goes against the spirit of the Open Meetings Act. Yes, the primary purpose of the meeting is to induct the city council's business, but it is also to give an opportunity for the public to actively inform the city council of concerns and opinions about items before the city council. I've sat up there and presided over meetings. I have found it very valuable to hear from the public as I tried to reach a decision. Sometimes, I came to the meeting, think I would vote one way, but after hearing the public, I changed my mind. Do not remove the requirement to record city council meetings as proposed. It may not be required by the Open Meetings Act, but it's good practice. Also, section 1, 2B, 13F8 requires recording meetings under certain circumstances. Thank you, and could you give that to Ms. Sorrell, please? Or, oh, Mr. Snyder will take it. I have one for others of you that I'll hand, if you don't mind, I'll come around. You can just give them all to him, and he'll get them to us, yeah. Actually, he can just take one copy and scan it to us. Okay, thank you so much, Mr. Monty. For those who don't know, Mr. Monty is, uh, has lots of city experience, so thank you so much. Uh, other citizens who wish to comment? I see a hand in the back, yes, ma'am.
My name is Anne Gaylord, I'm a Carbondale resident. Um, back in the early discussion, uh, Councilperson Kilman was concerned about the expression, "No citizen shall." And I think if I heard the council correctly, I think you may have settled on the expression, "No resident shall," but I would like to suggest a different word instead of resident. It's true, we have residents here all the time, but sometimes we have non-residents who live outside Carbondale who appear at our council meetings. And I would like to suggest the word person as being more inclusive. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Reed.
Elias Reed, Carbondale. I got a question, does the Open Meeting Act, I know you can ask questions, but does it allow the questions to be asked by citizens to be answered, uh, that you ask? A lot of times I ask questions, I heard you say that, uh, they're not-
We were not required to respond.
Right, okay.
Yes.
Does the Open Meeting Act allow, allows questions by citizens to be answered? What I'm asking.
I don't think that has to do with Open Meetings Act, though.
Does it allow it? It allows it if you wish to, but it does not require it to, it does not compel you to.
Yeah, we're not required to respond. Other citizens, Ms. Mays.
My name's Chastity Mays, and I'm a Carbondale resident. Um, just listening tonight, and I have never been on city council. I don't know anything about your training. But I think that the council, in going forward over the years, could benefit from a communications training, and also a cultural sensitivity training. Because I feel like this council has some cultural issues going on that need to be addressed. Um, and a training will go a long way. And I also feel like communication training, because we might think that as adults, we know how to talk to each other, but sometimes we just don't. And literally, it's, it's real simple when we think about it, but just having that person in the room to train you how to talk to each other is, is really powerful. And I think that would be beneficial to council. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Zerlandon.
Good evening, Justin Zerlandon. Uh, I think that removing the requirements to record and maintain the city council meetings is a step in the wrong direction. Uh, if the council, if this council's narrative is that we're bringing change, and we're digging into some of these big issues in Carbondale, why would we wanna make the public discussions inaccessible for people who can't be here on a Tuesday at 6 o'clock? I think having those accessible to other people is, is very important. Um, I would encourage the council to continue to record, even if it's not required. The fit, the, the nervousness that I have is that if we remove the requirement from the statute, that you guys may continue to record and post it, but the next council won't. Uh, as soon as we get someone that doesn't want to, then they don't have to, and then the, the transparency is gone. And so I think that we need to relook at that. Um, to address the demeaning language section, just the last council meeting, the competency and purpose of the Preservation Commission was questioned by a council member. And so, stopping that kind of language will help more residents be more engaged in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. And I don't think it was to stop rec-, correct me if I'm wrong, not stop recording the meetings, but we have a recording up here that's done of the meetings that we have to maintain for so long. So that was the recording that was referred to, which I know we didn't refer to that in the, the, uh, this. So, yeah, we, we would still be accessible. Uh, other citizens?
I'm, I'm gonna have to raise a, a point of privilege here. That last comment was referring to me, uh, and, and I think I should have an opportunity to, to speak on that.
Other cit-, we're on citizens' comments now. Other citizens who would like to comment? Yes, sir.
Hello, council, I'm Jacob, I live at the Quads. I know I'm fighting a losing battle here, but I thought I'd say it anyway. Um, I actually agree with moving down the time limit from four to three. I believe that if you can't articulate it in three minutes, you won't be able to do it in four. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other citizens who wish to comment? Okay, so. Why did I think that? But, okay, um, okay, so we're gonna bring this back up here, and you know I don't like the back and forth. So. Tell me if I can do this. Each council member will have one minute to comment if they have any closing remarks on this item. Can we do that? Is that acceptable? Okay, because I'm sure they're like me. Enough, right? Okay, let's start on this side. Mr. Dougherty, any comments on this?
No further comments.
Thank you. Mr. Loth.
With respect to the comment directed at me, uh, what I said was that each time that the council has considered demolishing a building, the Preservation Commission has sent someone down to encourage demolition. And so that's not, uh, impugning anyone's integrity or anyone's motivations. That's not what we're talking about here. And if you're not certain what we're talking about here, I would encourage you, one, to review that meeting, and then also to review the meetings over the last six months, and, and compare the conduct. And I think you'll see the difference between what, uh, is being talked about here uh, versus, uh, an opinion on the, on the continued viability and usefulness of the Preservation Commission, which is within the scope of what we are supposed to be doing.
Okay, Ms. Maxwell. Okay, and Mr. Hill?
Um, just once again, only thing I didn't really wanna see changed was the time limit. Um, change from four to three, and then everything else, especially the council code of con-, well, not code of conduct, council not being disorderly, I think we should keep that. And I think when it's the council, that includes the mayor, so it's not limited just us. It's not a personal attack to us. It's just saying we need to stay in our lanes and be respectful.
Okay, and Ms. Kilman?
Yes, firstly, I wanna thank Jennifer for all of her hard work compiling this for us. I appreciate it. I think that in the spirit of what it's intended to do, um, I agree, because there needs to be some modification to the way that we're running our meetings. Um, just for the simple sake of my own sanity and constitution, I hope you all will forgive me. Um, I, like, shut down physiologically right at 10:00 PM. And if we go past that, which we have, um, we run the risk of the, the individuals on this board not being able to be fully present and make sound decisions. Um, beyond that, um, I look forward to seeing what is produced after this, and thank everyone, I guess, for listening to council comments and concerns. And so I'm interested to see what staff takes from that, and then produces back for us.
And Ms. Rice Sanders. Turn your mic and use your mic.
Actions expresses priorities. That's all I have to say.
Oh, okay. Okay, pardon me? I, I don't, I just, um, I don't. I'm usually, I have no comments. Okay, so, the, that I think is the last item on our agenda. There being no other business to come before this council, this meeting is adjourned.